Okay, then I'll call to order this meeting of the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole. Could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes of previous meetings from December 5th. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes for December 5th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Next is additions to the agenda, and I would like to switch the order to have public input before closed session. No objections. Any other additions? Okay. Then next we'll have public input and presentations. I believe no presentations tonight. Alright, then public input. If anyone would like to address the Committee of the Whole, if you'd please step to the mic, state your name, and you have up to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Derek Bries. I'm a resident of Urbana Ward Four, and I'm here to provide comment on the approval of the collective bargaining agreement. First off, I have two major issues with this. One, I don't understand the rush nature of this. I don't understand why it's being rushed through so quickly, no notice at all to the general public, and from what I'm told, very little notice to council as well, particularly for a contract that doesn't expire until June of next year. I don't know what the sense of urgency is here, and I don't know why. It seems to be occurring under some sort of state of secrecy. The police are public employees, are they not? Why would the public not be informed about such a crucial agreement? And then second, very strongly opposed and very concerned about the lack of amendments to that contract from the previous years, previous three-years contract, particularly the lack of empowerment of the civilian review board, giving no real authority to the board, continuing to allow officers to choose whether or not they even appear before the board, giving them no real power to review the conduct or actions of the police. I find that terribly unacceptable. No provisions whatsoever for any sort of punishment or corrective action for use of excessive force, or for coercing a witness, or for fabricating evidence. That is entirely unacceptable. I don't know why this is such a high priority to get rushed through. If every other union that had this sort of thing, they would be pro-labor agreements for every union employee everywhere. It's absurd to me that public employees would have no public oversight, they would get an agreement rushed through way ahead of schedule. You can meet, talk to any other union employee in this city, they're not getting agreements gone through this quickly with this level of secrecy, and just with the history of the police both locally and nationally, and local focus on this. I think it's really unacceptable for council to consider approving something that doesn't address the issues of police violence that we've seen rampant in this community as well as the nation. I do know that at least two current council members ran on defunding the police. I take those promises very seriously, particularly in Ward Four, and I would expect council members to hold to those promises, that they're not just empty words, that the people of Urbana matter, and the people of Urbana deserve to have insight into this agreement, and they deserve to have oversight over police conduct. Thanks.
My name is Karen Medina, and although I live in Champaign, I do an awful lot of everything in Urbana, because Urbana is awesome. I would like to follow on his footsteps and say that you should have received a letter from the ACLU stating that they believe that the process was also too fast in the approval process for the city, the city council has to approve it too quickly. And I really like the letter because it also states what the police were stating when, publicly stating that their goals were in working with the community, in decreasing racism, and making that more transparent. I think those are the goals that are missing in the contract, and I would like to mention that maybe we should go back to the negotiating table. The other point that I would like to make is that I believe that the negotiators that were negotiating on behalf of the City of Urbana was a very small team. The process for choosing who those members were was not transparent to the city council or the citizens of Urbana, and that it is insufficiently, it's not large enough. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Leslie Owens. I've been a resident of Urbana for four and a half years. In summer of 2020, I joined marches in Urbana and Champaign to protest police violence against Black members of our community. I am also a proud union member and a union steward for a public sector union locally. I am here tonight to urge the city council to vote against approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police. I think my fellow community members have already put forth a lot of good points on this. Even though this contract does not expire until next summer, it seems to be being pushed through very hastily without proper review by city council members. It is also being pushed through without input from the civilian police review board or members of the Urbana community. I've also been informed that this contract has been negotiated behind closed doors, and that the Fraternal Order of Police can force the city to go to arbitration if this contract is not accepted immediately. These processes are vastly different from those of my own union. My union has contract negotiations that are open to its members. Our union posts publicly about the progress of negotiations, and so does our employer. If we cannot come to agreement, we bring our disputes to mediation. We don't leap ahead to forced arbitration. While I strongly support the rights of workers, the local police are expected to serve our community. The power they have means that they're not regular workers. They carry guns. They have the power to arrest members of our community. When police make mistakes, they can cost people their livelihoods and their lives. As such, careful public review of the proposed police contract is essential. I have particular concerns about the lack of power of the civilian police review board, as well as the lack of consequences for police officers who use excessive force. I urge the older persons here tonight to show your commitment to democracy, careful governance, and community safety by voting against approving this contract in haste.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chung from Urbana. Last year in September, the public brought up many concerns regarding the 2020 to 2023 Fraternal Order of Police contract that had failed to include changes to the use of force or de-escalation, and also a violation of the Urbana Human Rights Ordinance. Some of you council members tried to make excuses, such as not having enough notice or not being involved in the discussions, and some of you even touted the changes as wins, and some of you were afraid to ask to renegotiate or to do more negotiations, as Mayor Marlin and her team had threatened that these changes could be lost. But the public told you the truth. We told you the truth, that the changes that were made, most of them were actually the minimum number of changes required to belatedly comply with Illinois state law. Last year, only Councilmember Evans and Bishop voted no. Councilmember Wilkins voted present, but her vote was still counted as a yes. And this year, interim chief Richard Sells and HR and Finance Director Elizabeth Henan represented the Urbana bargaining team. The FOP union was represented by five police surgeons and police investigators. Does this seem like a balanced bargaining team to you? Councilmembers, do you have a say in who represents Urbana in the bargaining process? The changes to this year's FOP contract for 2023 to 2026 are mainly pay increases that are costing taxpayers approximately $1 million. The whole, the old contract had an increase of 1.5%, 2%, and 2.5% from 2020 to 2022, and this new contract increases from 3.5% to 3.6%. Other changes are such as updating the discriminatory policy to protect police officers. But I find this really ironic, as the discriminatory policy against residents who would like to serve voluntarily on the CPRB, the civilian police review board, is still there, the same as last year. As all of you alerted to last year, this restriction, restricting a convicted felon of serving on the civilian police review board is prohibited by Chapter 12 of the Urbana City Code, also known as the Urbana Human Rights Ordinance. Last year, bargaining attorney Ben Gert tried to tell you that this was legal because of the Illinois labor law and employment laws, specifically Section 15 of the Illinois Public Labor Relations, and he also brought up the bona fide occupational qualifications, BF-OQ clause, in the Urbana City Code. However, the public, we told you, we alerted you that these are labor and employment laws, and they don't apply to volunteers of a review board. And when I pressed on for further explanation on this matter, no one could provide further explanation on how this type of discrimination was legal, and how they can get away with this, even though it's a violation of the Human Rights Ordinance. Councilmember Evans, last year you voted no, and proceeded to give a vocal statement regarding why you voted no. You also said that it escaped your attention that felons were discriminated against to ever be appointed to the civilian police review board. You also provided a list of four sections to be amended. This included adding in clauses such as permanent documentation of warnings, deficiencies, and repriments. You also asked for updating the residency requirements, requiring police officers subject to a CPRB proceeding to appear before the CPRB upon request, for more transparency of CPRB proceedings and relevant officer records, ability for the CPRB to conduct independent third-party investigations, and also a whole change, a whole list of changes to Article Eight, the grievance procedure that are related to excessive use of force and accountability. Oh, that's a long list. As far as I can tell, none of these items have been included, and you also cannot plead ignorance to the discriminatory CPRB requirement. So, as a representative of my ward, what are you going to do about it? It also seems that none of the concerns that the public brought up since the last FOP contract in 2021 have been addressed. If I'm not mistaken, this is the last FOP contract that you will be voting on since it expires in 2025. Are you just going to accept things how they are? And all of you, are you going to go back on your promises and changes that you promised to make, promise to the public, promise to the residents of Urbana when campaigning for city council?
Thank you. Time is up. If anyone else would like to address the committee, please step forward and state your name.
Hello, Christopher Hansen. I understand you're voting on a new FOP contract. I've made you aware numerous times since you voted on the last contract that you still aren't even complying with that one. Many of the changes you made, which were very few in nature, are still being ignored. You were supposed to have removed from the complaint form the requirement to be physically present. You still haven't done that. I've sent numerous emails about this. You've all ignored it. You're supposed to remove the sworn affidavit statement from the police complaint contracts. You still haven't done that. That's, that's a violation of state law, actually, so I don't know why you guys aren't complying, but I suggest not passing more contracts that your police department is just going to ignore. I mean, why are we here? I mean, you, you might even try to make improvements, and they're just going to be ignored. So, I would like it if our police officers stopped committing crimes, at least bring us into compliance with state law. That's what your previous contract was supposed to have done, but you just keep ignoring it. So, I don't know how many times I have to write articles or email you guys, but you just keep ignoring, ignoring, ignoring. I don't, do we have anyone from the police department here? No? I don't know. Your chief, your police chief, your deputy chief, they're all aware of these things, they just don't care. So, I suggest you fix those things. I suggest you investigate how it was that 40 years of police complaints were destroyed without permission from the state records office, so, I don't know. It'd be a start, it'd be a start, if you could do some of those things. Thanks.
I'm Stuart Levy. I live in Champaign, but I do work in Urbana. I just came here from campus. So, it seems as though, so I too would like to speak to the, the issue of an apparently railroaded-through contract with the Fraternal Order of Police. And it seems as though the, the city council has a longstanding problem that the contracts are negotiated without, by people who are not even elected by the people of Urbana. So, how can, let's see, the police pay a very important public-facing function, and accountability of the police to the people of Urbana is an essential, an essential term in their work, at least it should be. So, how can it be that the council has no role in determining what conditions go into the contract with the police? This, this seems like, this should be a problem that you, the council, should hold as a mirror in front of your face. What can you do to control what goes into the, the police contracts before it is presented to you as something that cannot be amended? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Committee of the Whole tonight? Seeing none in person. I have a few emails that were asked to be read aloud upon further correspondence, and for anyone else who sent them in, those will be included in the minutes for sent to council with public input. This first one is from Sarah Blanco. "I'm concerned to learn about the surprise vote tonight on the 2023-2026 police contract. The public deserves to have more time to provide input on issues concerning the police. City council members also need to have enough time to review this contract in depth and propose changes in accordance with the constituents' wishes. There are six months left in the current contract, so there's absolutely no need to rush a new three-year contract through, over the holidays. The proposed contract flies in the face of the urgent demand for police accountability that the public has raised repeatedly, both during and after election cycles. I urge all council members to vote to delay this contract decision and ordinance with their responsibilities as public representatives." Next one is from Carol Leff. "Please do not rush something through when it is an important, when it's important as the next police contract without time for the council to fully consider, much less allow for public input, especially not just as the holiday season is beginning for both Hanukkah and Christmas. Not an ideal time to thoughtfully reflect on 60-page document for many. Thanks for your due consideration of this time constraint." Another quick one is George Vassalado. "Writing to express deep concern with the process and contents of new police contract in 2021, the City of Urbana overwhelmingly elected progressives. Voters, young and old, turned out to vote in favor of candidates who claimed they would hold the police accountable after the mass protests against local and national police brutality in 2020. Now with the police contract nearing its expiration date, members of council have the opportunity to follow through on their promises. Just as in 2020, the police will try intimidation tactics. They'll try to make it seem like if the council doesn't approve this contract, an arbitrator will automatically rule in favor of the police. In 2020, the City of Urbana stood up against police intimidation, and now in 2022, it's time for the council to do the same. Instead of voting to approve this horrendous contract, which weakens the CPRB and protects the police from serious third-party investigations of misconduct, I urge you to vote no or extend the deliberation period. Families and workers in Urbana have a right to know that this new contract would take a million more years of their tax dollars, a million more of their tax dollars, sorry. They have the right to know that the former police officers and with the Law Enforcement Action Project believe that Urbana's police contract is one of the least transparency and least accountability in the country. There has not been enough time for public input, and that's intentional. The police want this contract to be signed in the dark because they know that if deliberations are extended, your constituents who turned out to support Black Lives Matter in 2022 and 2021 will make their voices heard in public comment." Thank you. I think those ones had to be expressly read, and again, others that were sent in will be included in the written meeting minutes. Did anyone else have some that were requested to be read? Okay, then concluding public input. Oh, sorry, Sharice, go ahead.
This is from Alan Axelrod. "I'm curious to see tonight if again there are differences between what candidates promised and how they vote. I would recommend all the persons who do not like that the police contract can go to forced arbitration, that they contact their legislator on the matter. We do not have to settle for laws we have inherited."
Thank you. Okay, then our next item is closed session for collective bargaining pursuant to 5ILCS120-2CE. Do we have a motion?
Yes. I'll move that we go into closed session pursuant to 5ILCS120/2C2.
Does that take a second? Or vote?
Second.
End of vote? Okay. Can we do voice?
No, roll call.
Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. It looks like we have everyone back, and I don't remember what we do next. Just straight vote to come back?
We actually should do another roll call.
I move to close, open session.
And then a second to come back into open session, and we'll do it through a roll call.
I move to come back into open session.
I didn't catch any of that, because there's multiple people talking at once. I'm sorry, I didn't catch any of the procedures. If you could, please repeat.
Okay, we need a motion to come back into open session, and then we do that with a roll call at the end of that, okay? You need a motion and a second.
I'd like to move to come back into open session.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion. Sharice?
I'd like to move to come back into open session.
Thank you. Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item is staff report. Do we have any staff reports? Okay, thank you. Next item is new business. First is Resolution Number 2022-12-019R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 70, term of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. Do we have a motion?
I move that, I move this Resolution Number 2022-12-091R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 70, term of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2026, to be held in committee for further discussion.
Second. Okay, moved by Chandra to keep in committee of the whole, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Yes, James?
Yeah, I think, I think it's clear that we've had feedback from the public, that they wanted more time to understand what was going on with this, and I know city council has questions that they want to pursue with, with this, so I will be supporting keeping this in committee so we can have further discussion and, and a more transparent process.
Any other discussion? Yes, Jaya?
I just think just to add to what James shared, that some of the intention also is just to allow for staff to kind of explain more of what the process has been, so that when we're talking about ensuring that transparency for the public, it's not just us council members, you know, taking that time to review and making sure that the public has a chance to review it, but also an opportunity for city staff to talk through more of what that process has been, and why it is the way it is with FOP contracts specifically, because they are a bit different, and so we want to make sure that everybody knows and understands what the process has looked like so far.
Any other discussion? Chandra, do you mind taking the chair, please?
Sure, the chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Just wanted to echo the others and say that I appreciate that we are taking the time to have, you know, continue this in committee of the whole for more input for us to review, and for the public to have some more time to thoroughly go through it. There's a lot of things here I'm still trying to understand and learn about the uniqueness of the police contracts, and where it falls with the contracts, the policies, the ordinance, and all the things that come into play to have an impact and make changes in the city. So, I appreciate the extra time to do that, and look forward to hearing more about the remaining questions. Do you want to take the chair?
I relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Last discussion? Last chance? Okay. Could, I guess we can do voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that carries to stay in committee of the whole. Next is ordinance number 2022-12-053, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map for 1603 East Washington Street, Plan Case 2464M-22. Yes, Chris's point-of-order thing, or? Yeah, unless there was point-of-order, I think that's not a time yet for anything else.
Good evening, everyone. The zoning administrator on behalf of the City of Urbana is requesting a rezoning of the parcel at 1603 East Washington Street from its current zoning of B3 general business to the proposed zoning of R5 medium-high-density multiple-family residential. This is following a proposal for an affordable housing development the city received for the lot in September. Staff conducted outreach by mail on the case to over 200 neighboring property owners, and placed notice in the news gazette, city social media, and on the property itself. Staff also held a neighborhood meeting on December 1st at Fourth Square Church on Washington Street. Twelve members of the public attended that meeting, and a summary of the discussion is included in the staff report. On December 8th, Plan Commission heard the case and voted unanimously to forward it to city council with a recommendation of approval. Notes on the Plan Commission hearing are also included in the staff report. Outside of those meetings, staff have received no public comments on the case. Staff agree with Plan Commission's recommendation, finding that the request meets the criteria for a zoning map amendment. This is a location map which shows the property at the southeast corner of the intersection of Washington Street and Learman Avenue. The parcel is just under one acre and is currently vacant, following the dissolution of the nonprofit that had managed a community garden at the location from 2012 until June of this year. The city acquired the property in 2012 with the intention of it serving as a site for affordable housing, and that was mentioned in the ordinance that authorized the purchase of the lot back then. Pending a suitable development proposal and funding, the site was leased on a yearly basis to the Learman Neighborhood Action Committee for temporary use as a garden. Here's a photo of that most recent use prior to its current vacancy. And then prior to its use as a garden, the lot had primarily been vacant throughout its history, and we have some historical aerials of the site here. And then in the fall of this year, the city received a proposal from North Point, a housing developer based in Wisconsin, for an approximately 40-unit affordable housing development, which would target families at a range of income levels below the area median. This development would- This development would be at both 1603 East Washington Street and 1001 South Lierman Avenue. That's the large vacant lot just south of the gas station across the street. The developers also expressed interest in incorporating amenities into the project, such as a garden or playground, depending on further community outreach. And in October, council approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of Champaign County to explore financing for the project. Something to emphasize with all of that is that while this rezoning would be one prerequisite for that proposed development or any other potential multifamily development at the site, the final site layout would still require separate subsequent approval by council because it would be happening on city-owned land and potentially receiving city funding. Since this isn't the last level of review for that proposed development, and that is in ensure to move forward, given the uncertainties of funding, tonight we want to focus more on the current and proposed zoning districts in general in terms of their suitability for the location. So the property is currently zoned B3 general business, which is a zoning district that's generally intended to provide space for a wide range of business uses throughout the city, as is the parcel immediately to the west, which is the site of a Shell gas station, just as another nearby example. And then the parcels to the south are zoned R5 medium-high-density multiple-family residential, as we're proposing to change the zoning of 1603 East Washington to. And then the parcel at 1001 South Lierman Avenue that would also be included in this current proposal is also zoned R5 currently. And then this is the 1979 zoning map where the property seemingly first received the first B3 designation. And then this is a 2005 comprehensive plan, future land use map. You can see the intersection of Washington and Lierman on the left, where you can see that the property received the residential future land use designation, which it shares with the blocks of Lierman Avenue to the south and Washington Street to the east. And then the current residential uses in that area are a mixture of single-family duplexes and multifamily properties. So staff find that the R5 proposal is generally compatible with the 2005 future land use designation and the existing land uses in the area. The Illinois Supreme Court lays out eight criteria that can be used in evaluating a rezoning request. Those are kind of explored in detail and one by one in the staff report, but to summarize, staff find that the criteria are met based on things like the compatibility of the proposed zoning district with the existing surrounding land uses and zoning, the 2005 comprehensive plan, future land use designation, and the lot's historical failure to attract business uses in line with its current B3 general business zoning. And given the city's established intention to ultimately use the lot for affordable housing, as was indicated in the 2012 purchasing agreement and the 2022 intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority, we're also taking the local shortage of affordable housing into account in terms of the need for the proposed use and potential public benefits from the proposed zoning change, and that need is something that's documented in the recent consolidated plan and ARP allocation plan. So based on those findings, again, Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested zoning map amendment. Staff agree with the recommendation and have prepared an ordinance approving the rezoning, which we're also recommending be placed on the consent agenda for the next regular council meeting. I can take questions for staff on the request, and Kevin Garcia, the principal planner, is also here. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and I think I saw James' hand first.
Thank you. I was reviewing the, the minutes from the Plan Commission meeting. Would it be safe to summarize the public input? You said there were 12 people there. Looks like only two people spoke, and it looks like both of them spoke in general against additional high-density housing or low-income housing being put in the area in, in general, as opposed to the specific lot?
So to clarify, there were 12 people at the neighborhood meeting, which we hosted on the first prior to Plan Commission. I believe there were three members of the public at the Plan Commission hearing, and two spoke, but yes, they expressed some concerns about potential negative effects of affordable housing development.
Could you then summarize the feedback of the 12 at the community meeting?
So we got a lot of comments about sort of specifics of potential site plans for future developments, and those are things that, since they don't pertain as much directly to the zoning, we did take notes of those and will forward them to the developer if a development moves forward. As far as the zoning specifically goes, there was some discussion about why the R5 district in particular was chosen, and then there was also some discussion of considering the CRE, Conservation, Recreation, Education District, if we wanted to maintain the lot as more of a purely recreational use in line with its previous garden use, although, you know, given the commitments with the previous purchasing agreement and the CDBG funds that were used to purchase the lot for an affordable housing use, my understanding is that potential future uses are limited.
All right, thank you. Were any of the things that were discussed that people talked about, would any of those be undoable in the R5? Were any of them things that would require a special use if we did them there?
Not really. I would say the only potential use that folks seemed really attached to, other than the potential housing development, was its past use as a garden, and that's something that would still have been permitted in the R5 district.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Chris?
Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the report here. I, I agree with kind of the reasoning, the law, the process a little bit, and kind of, you know, how staff has laid this out. It makes sense. The B3 wasn't working 40 years vacant, right? So change, I guess, I didn't know this, there's two developers looking for, at this land now? Because it says in the, it says, Mr. Garcia didn't know which potential developers will get the funding. I'm assuming that's ARPA funding and that tax rebate, and city staff cannot say who the developer will be. There are no developers selected yet?
Well, obviously, excuse me, well, you heard from North Point Development during the ARPA, during the ARPA funding discussion. We were approached by North Point and another developer who I don't think that they pursued funding from, from the state.
Okay, well Sheila Dodd has been representing that there is a developer, and we saw in our presentation, and they said they were the developer.
Right.
So.
So we do currently have one development proposal, which is kind of the primary thing we're currently considering for the lot. It's, nothing's really certain at this point. They're still waiting on tax credit funding through the state, so if that doesn't come through, it's uncertain if they would be able to move forward at that point, and then again, they would still need to prevent, present site plans, which would go through further community discussion and approval.
And is it staff's opinion that if that development comes, doesn't, doesn't come through, having it zoned for R5 would still be beneficial in the long term?
Absolutely. It's also my opinion that we're kind of 10 years late to rezoning this. We probably should have rezoned this back when City Council said in 2012, we want to use this for affordable housing in the future. No harm would have come had we rezoned it then.
Yes, Sharice?
I guess my question is, now that Chris brought up, you know, the fact that there may be multiple or more than one developers interested, my question becomes, does it have to be apartment complexes? Can it be something in line with like the Douglas Estates that they have in Champaign? I think that's what it's called, where there are duplexes and people have room, you know, to, to run, to, there's some, you know, there's a little piece of a backyard and that kind of thing. Is, does it have to be that?
Yeah, so the, the R5 district would permit a range of densities. One of the reasons we chose this district was that it would allow some flexibility in terms of workshopping different site plans with the public, but I, I do know that those are concerns that we've been hearing about not wanting the density too high from some members of the public, so I, I think there's definitely going to be some flexibility in working with the developer and having those conversations down the road.
Okay, thank you. Yes, James?
Yeah, although I know it's not the final site plan, I think the site plan that we saw in fact had those as, I think, six duplex, six units in duplex ranch style, in what they, they suggested to keep the density down, but I know that's not the final answer.
Mm-hmm.
And I had a few questions. Could you please provide the written procedures for the development approval? Not now, obviously, but at some point, referencing the development approval that would come later. Could you just point me to where that process is laid out?
Yeah, I think that would be Sheila's end of things, not so much planning, but I, I can follow up with Sheila about that and have her get back to you.
Thank you. And then why rezone this now? Is there an issue with waiting until there's more certainty about the development?
It would just make things move a little more slowly at that point, I think.
Any other questions for staff?
I'll make a motion if there's no other questions.
Sure.
I, I'll move ordinance number 2022-12-053, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map for 1603 East Washington Street, Plan Case Number 2464-M-22, to City Council on the consent agenda for approval.
Second.
Okay, that was, yeah, so let me just restate, and then I'll let you, as the mover, say, just want to recap. That was moved by James to consent agenda, seconded by Sharice, if you would like to explain your motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to support this, this rezoning, as, as we've heard from staff, this would put us in a position to go down that development path, should we find a developer and a plan that we support. I believe that the current zoning is not effective. It has not been effective for a very long time, and we agree with the assessment that was shared, that we probably should have changed the zoning in 2012. When I say we, I mean council at that time, should have changed the zoning at 2012 if its intent was for it to be affordable housing. I also understand from the answer to my question that changing it to R5 would not preclude any potential use, while there's not a development there, that would satisfy what we've heard from the community that they'd like to do there, most specifically restoring a garden. And so I think it puts us in a good position. We have no need for this to stay B3 going forward, and that's why I'm supporting it.
You, Chandra?
So last week, we heard a plethora of proposals regarding affordable housing and the lack thereof, and we kept hearing the statistic of 11.8% of people residing in Urbana live below the poverty level. So I think that building more affordable homes for families is something that our community needs, so I will be supporting the rezoning of this in an effort to build more affordable housing. And I, you know, have heard the, the comments of affordable housing leading to an increase in crime, but I, I'm a researcher, and I looked this up, and I read a number of studies that contradict that statement and that thought process. Mixed-income housing does not contribute to reduced home values or an increase in crime, and I, I think that that is a false narrative that is being circulated, and I, and I just, I don't think that that should be a reason why decreasing the number of homeless or close-to-homeless families in our area should be the reason why we, we don't, you know, pass the zoning ordinance so that a development can be made, so.
You, Chris?
I, I agree with James and what Chandra just said. City clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to amend the motion to send this back to committee of the whole because I would like to see more public input about what to do with the land, but am I wrong to make that motion?
No, but it has to be a second, and then the maker of the motion has to agree.
Okay.
Do we have a second to keep this in committee of the whole? I think we said I can't pass chair and mover second anything. All right, then that motion, I guess, stops there. Any other discussion? Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, I, I think making sure there's plenty of opportunities for community input on this is really important. I think it is important that while we're talking about there being a potential developer, nothing is being built at this time. This is just allowing us the opportunity, you know, as Chandra said, as been stated before, there's such a need for affordable housing in our community, this would give us the ability to move, to actually make that happen if, if this developer or another developer works out. I think it is important, as James said, too, is it doesn't prohibit and actually makes it maybe, I think, easier to have a, a garden in that spot, too, if that's something that ends up happening, I think, by right versus by special permit, if I'm remembering that correctly, but regardless, I think that moving along so that we're poised to be able to use what this land was meant for, and I think those conversations, if it is with this developer, with the community, to make sure that push for a garden, or at least some garden space continues, is, is something that's still important. It's not either or, but this allows us to, to potentially meet a, a very pressing need that has been identified by much of our community and as a priority for this council. So I will be supporting moving this forward.
Yes, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I hope staff and whoever becomes interested in that piece of land will work with the community on the design and the development and the activities and whatever goes on, on that piece of land, so that's my hope, and, and I know you guys tried to get public input. It is hard to get people to come out to things, but I think, I think I saw in the minutes that the Plan Commission commissioners, they, they talked about, you know, getting public input, so hopefully that'll happen.
Thank you. And then I had some, oh, Sharice, go ahead.
I just want to make one more clarification right here. This is just, we're just rezoning this land from business to R5, which is more of a flexible type of, of zoning for different types of developments that can happen, correct?
R5 would allow more residential uses.
Okay, and so we're, we're not voting on a developer, we don't have a plan, we don't have a final plat, all we have is the rezoning that we're doing right now?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
And James, you mind taking chair for me?
Yes, chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I first wanted to clarify some things from my experience of attending the neighborhood meeting on December 1st. I understand, you know, the perspective of only including the comments that had to do with zoning or rezoning and not the general purpose. I also find that in practice kind of strange, because I think the only comments here are from me and Dennis Roberts, and so it doesn't actually summarize the comments that were made by the neighborhood members at that meeting that night. What I heard, which was, doesn't have to do with zoning, but I think it actually does have to do with zoning, but apparently doesn't, was the want for, to not have a housing complex on this one site, as opposed to the whole rest of the complex that's planned, but that people were wanting to maintain small garden space, playground, and basketball court was another one that came up. I think there's a realistic understanding about the hard work and the limitations and challenges of managing a community garden, but I think the community mentioned lots of other amenities that they would like to have there. I think we need a lot more public input, we definitely do, but so far, everything I've heard has been people requesting these other community heard has been people requesting these other community assets, I guess, except tonight. Tonight was the first one I heard in favor of housing in the spot. Besides that, all the other ones had been against housing on the site and been in wanting of community assets to maintain kind of the garden feel, which I think is also a point one about existing land uses and zoning of nearby property. The existing land use, I know that it wasn't the intentional one, but it is a big change for a community to drive past your community garden for 10 years and then have that change when they're wanting to keep that community asset that people have grown accustomed to. I have concerns about us committing and obligating us by rezoning because of the intergovernmental agreement we already have with Housing Authority and some conflicting things that I've heard already from emails about if we're obligated already or not to move through with this development. So I would definitely appreciate some more information on the developer approval process that's supposedly still to come, but I have a lot of concerns that if we rezone this now and we already entered the IGA with Housing Authority, that there will be no opportunity for the community or even council to request other options. I think it's going to be a matter of how you want it, not if you want it. I think we'll come to the community and say, okay, we'll have a few tiny raised bed gardens and we'll call that it. I don't think that there's going to be the meaningful opportunity to say, if we really want to make this basketball court, playground, park kind of area, is that a possibility? And I don't think it's going to be later on, and I hope that I'm wrong. So I think we need more public input. And I also have questions about this development being affordable, that the highest number of units were quoted at 80% AMI, that was 50 to almost $80,000 a year income, which I don't know what AMI that correlates to. That doesn't seem affordable to me. I think that there could be creative solutions because only six units are planned on this site. The vast majority of them are planned on the other site behind the gas station, which I haven't heard any complaints or issues about and is already properly zoned. So I would definitely like more time on this and I would like to hold off on it. And I appreciate any openness to considering some possibilities on this. Thanks.
I relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, then we have on the table, motion by James for consent agenda, and seconded by Sharice. And could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
No.
You said no?
Correct, no.
All right, Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2022-12-054, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class T, R and T1 liquor licenses for Best of Africa Store LLC, 208 West Griggs Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Yes, Madam Chair, in light of results that we received this morning from a fire safety inspection, we're asking that this item be kept in committee until all those items are completed. And we ask the same of actually Resolution Number 2022-12-092R, that's also connected to this property. So we'd like them both to stay in committee.
Thank you. For sake of process, do we, should we do questions first for motion?
Have you made a motion?
I think we'll, someone will need to make a motion. But just of order of process, would you questions first, if there was questions on that? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I would move that we keep ordinance number 2022-12-054, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R and T liquor license for Best of Africa Food Store LLC at 208 West Griggs Street, Urbana, Illinois, in committee for further discussion.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by James, seconded by Jaya, to keep this item in committee of the whole. Could we, are any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That ordinance carries. Next is Resolution 2022-12-092R, resolution approving and amending, or do we do them both? Well, you did one, right?
I only did one. Because one's an ordinance and one's a motion. Didn't know how to put them together.
Okay, so a resolution approving and amending, it's okay, and re, let me try again. A resolution approving and amended and restated right-of-way license agreement with MCDJ LLC, 208 West Griggs Street.
I'll make a motion to keep Resolution Number 2022-12-092R, resolution approving and amended and restated right-of-way license agreement with MCDJ LLC, 208 West Griggs Street, in committee for further discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by James, seconded by Jaya, to keep in committee of the whole. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our new business. Our next item is discussion on ARPA next steps. Will, or anyone else, did you have any opening leading things or are we discussing freely amongst ourselves?
No, I didn't have any opening prepared. I just thought it would be an open discussion, so I'm happy to provide any context or answer any questions as needed, but other than that, no.
Thank you. Yes, Chris?
Will, first question. Question, we're supposed to be submitting our questions about the various proposals to you Tuesday. You told me that, do we have longer than Tuesday, though?
Yes, that's not a hard deadline. If you need more time, that's fine.
Okay.
Ms. Jaya?
Kind of related to that, I thought Tuesday was the goal for feedback. Was there a goal in terms of when you get that feedback?
From you? So what, you know, I had a Tuesday, but if you need more time, Chris, does Thursday sound good to get everything back by or?
You want everything?
Everything?
I think maybe to clarify, with the holiday, is it, are you wanting it so that staff have time to process it and be able to look at it before the holidays?
The thought process is more of just to keep the ball moving to get more time. I'm thinking about the holidays and actual available time. There's no hard deadline from the staff side of things. It's just the sooner that we get it, the sooner we can turn it around. So if there's more time that council wants, there's no reason why it can't be that long to have more time to digest and review and, you know, get comments and things like that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that trying to keep things moving, but I ask that just because, you know, Christmas Eve is observed on Friday, so I don't know. I guess, I'm wondering, I guess my question is, can we have until after the holidays? But I don't know if that's too long.
Can we have until after the holidays?
So, yes.
Thank you very much.
So how does next Wednesday sound?
Oh, God, no. After. Could we also clarify, what we're talking about? We're talking about feedback. Do you mean like?
So there's two things. The questions for applicants, and we can, I mean, for those, we can do kind of two rounds. I mean, it doesn't have to be a single set, so if I can send out a batch this week to folks and then if people have more questions over the holidays, I can send another round of questions. That works as well. And the other one that we had was the scoring summary from the note sheets, specifically the, kind of the final thoughts sections was people's first thoughts were, you know, whether they were inclined to, you know, think something might be fun, some not eligible or some potential restrictions, just kind of aggregating those as something to collect together so council can see what everybody else thought and review that. So those are the two things that I'm referring to.
Yes, James?
Yeah, so I appreciate that. My concern is, I think each night I sent a batch of questions for follow-up and I don't think I can finish my summary sheet completely until I have the answers to those questions. So it's a little chicken and egg-ish to say that the questions are due and the feedback is due at the same time. I do want, for a couple of those, I do want answers to those questions to finalize my review, so if that, if we could, we could put off turning in our reviews until we've had the cycle of questions and answers, I would appreciate it.
Sure, we'll go Jaya and then Mayor Marlon.
So I'm stuck on the timing because I'm also just thinking, you know, for all the applicants, right, there are likely to be people who are traveling. I don't know if we've communicated with them in terms of the turnaround time, in terms of getting back to us with our questions, too. So I think, I guess I would just kind of reinforce what Sharice said. I think if we can try to, as much as I want to keep this process moving along, if we can move it till after New Year's, I just think that realistically speaking, there are going to be a lot of people who are not available and I don't want anyone who should be getting those questions to also not see them or have time to answer them or take time away from their loved ones to answer those questions.
Dan, did you add something?
Just to clarify, to submit the feedback on the final thoughts, it's the spreadsheet that you want people to fill out that you sent out, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sharice?
And I just want to piggyback on what Jaya was saying, in particularly regarding, this is, you know, a busy time of year. People are spending time with their families, they're traveling, there's supposed to be a huge snowstorm coming up and through here. And so I really think that trying to, and we were just inundated, at least I don't know about anybody else, but I was last week, with a lot of thought and a lot of thinking about what this process is going to be. So I don't know about anybody else. I need time to digest and to go back and research and review a lot of things. And I don't, you know, personally, I have, I have family that I want to spend time with, too. So I would like to, you know, I would like to be able to have the time, more time, so that I can do that, that I can try to do all of that, if it's okay.
Sure. Jaya, you mind taking the chair? I'm just popping it around.
Sure, the chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I agree with needing more time. I personally need more time as well. This has been the end of the semester. I haven't had finals week last week and haven't even graded everything and so I have not had time to sit down and read through all the applications, let alone having issues accessing them. So I am not ready to have those hard decisions. And I also agree with James's point of having some of those initial questions answered and coming into play with it. I think the spreadsheet thing, I think I can do the ranking. A lot of the other questions on the evaluation sheets for the presentations just didn't resonate with me, don't seem like something that I find helpful with evaluating. I think it is really helpful to have the, you know, yes, no, partial, kind of general sense of it. And I think that the more that we can do ahead of time individually and then compile together would be also very helpful, kind of like we saw with the fire stations. I think sometimes we can be saying similar things and not quite understand that we're saying the same things. And sometimes it's helpful to have someone's, you know, just take a kind of survey approach or compile those data points and say, okay, majority say yes to this, majority say no to this, and kind of separate out some of the ones that we have general agreement on and then some of the ones in between. We're going to have to figure that out. Obviously, we can't give funding the full amount to everyone. I never would have thought in my entire life that $10 million would feel so small. I never would have thought it, so it's going to be really hard and I think we're going to have to have some creative solutions, some paring things down. But I think the more that we can do on our own to kind of come up with our own list and then maybe if we can have a central point to compile those and have that same kind of similar-ish style as fire presentations and see if there's places that we all, or majority at least, kind of agree or not, and then where we need to figure out all the in-between areas. I think that's all. I'll take the chair.
Chair relinquishes the chair to Grace.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yeah, Chandra?
So it sounds like we wanted, you know, submit our feedback after the holidays. So could we say, like, by Friday, January 6? Like, can we all submit at least, at least? I think we should have our questions to Will before January 6, but at some point during that first week back. So then by the next week, we're getting answers back and we could give that whole, this app gets full, partial, or none, feedback, or however you want to say it, before the end of January in general. I mean, does that sound feasible to have most of your feedback to Will by January 6? Like, I like to put dates and times on things, otherwise I just keep pushing it off. Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, the mayor and I were talking about this a couple of weeks ago, and as you're, you know, compiling your questions and sending them to Will, that means you're also, you know, looking at the applicants and doing things like that. And while you're doing that, we, the mayor and I were thinking it would be easy to start doing categorizing your no ways, I'm not going to fund this. At the same time, you might be able to put together a few must haves and kind of get those, what you were saying, Grace, those mid-range ones, well, I could sort of go for it, you know, you're not sure. But anyway, what I'm saying is, as we're doing our questions, we should try to start categorizing these 45 contestants as we go along. But first, I think first is the questions, of course.
Okay, so if I could clarify some things we've talked about so far, is our initial goal was to have presentation questions to Will by Tuesday, tomorrow, but it sounds like there is, there's also the opportunity as we come up with more, as we're reading in, we can also send more in, but that was the first round. We have a goal of kind of doing our individual rankings and thoughts on things and have them to Will by Friday, January 6. There's no objections or thoughts? Yeah, James?
I'm not sure if that's what I heard Chandra say. I thought January 6 was the deadline for questions for the presentations.
Sorry. I was thinking actually for the questions as soon as possible and Will, can questions be on a rolling basis? Like, those who have them compiled tomorrow, send them in tomorrow and then, you know, you can send them to the applicant, but like Jaya said, if they're not in the office, then we'll just get them when they return after their vacations or whatever. And then the feedback or the scoring or the buckets, as Chris called them, by 1-6.
Okay, I'm okay with that, with that, if we get the answers to the questions before 1-5.
Right, right. I mean, you could, but you could offer the ones that you don't have pending questions for 1-6. You know what I mean? Like, these are the, of the ones that I don't have future questions about, these are the buckets that they fall in. You know what I mean? Just to at least start whittling it down more. So you're not looking at 41, but maybe you're just looking at 22 of them because the other 22 have questions. Does that make sense?
I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, it, I've been through the whole list several times and it's a balancing act, right? And so now I'm looking for differentials as to what goes in and what doesn't go in. And so if I don't have the answers to the questions, it might, it's going to, it's going to change what might go in versus what might not go in.
Okay, well, I think we ought to have.
I just, I just think it would be, I think it would be possible for us, I don't, I don't know what Will's time looks like, but it, but it just feels like we should commit to getting the questions to him by a certain time so that he can commit to getting us answers by a certain time so we can do our final review, final feedback by a certain time. I think January 6 is possible.
Jaya?
Ooh, that date gives me the heebie-jeebies. So I think one thing to think about, though, is if we say even, you know, we're getting questions to Will by such a date, sorry, we're just talking about you as if you're not here.
That's what I get paid for.
But also thinking about the applicants, right? Like, if we're not getting questions to Will until the 2nd, because, you know, it's after New Year's is observed, or the 3rd, whichever, then what time do applicants have to actually answer those questions in order for us to get responses by the 6th, right? So I think that's where we kind of, you know, they all stack. And I'm sure that was part of the idea of get them to me as quickly as possible, right? But like, I think a lot of people are already this week traveling for holidays, so.
I think.
I think it's not a bad goal of the 6th, but I think that there might have to be a review and say if people still have pending questions, that we extend it to the following Monday.
I mean, it won't be, it won't be like if we don't It won't be like, if we don't have all our feedback or questions in by 1-6, like, your chances cut off, it's just like, just to make sure things are still moving, because I think, I know the holidays are important, but I also think we may be underestimating our applicants' motivation and enthusiasm to be chosen or get a final answer as well, so, I mean, not everyone's going to turn off their email, they might be willing to respond to questions.
Okay, can I try and recap again? We'll see how this would go. So it sounds like still, questions to Will are by tomorrow, if we can, and there can still be more trickling in, but after tomorrow, say Wednesday, then you'll send out that initial round, so people have some time to answer at least those questions that were sent in, and as others come in, they can also be sent to applicants. And then we're going to try to have our individual bucket categories for each application by Friday, January 6th, to Will, depending on hopefully having questions answered, and sounds like we can kind of see how things go at that point, but at least gives us a deadline, so it's not so ambiguous, we have kind of a target for ourselves. Is that right? This time for people's understandings and agreements? Other discussion?
How many days would you need to review the answers to those questions before the 6th?
I think we can also see how it goes.
Yeah, a day or two at most, I mean, I know I've sent in like eight questions, so it won't take very long.
Yes, James?
I do have a question, I want to make sure I understand, all of the videos are online at this point, right? So anybody can, anybody from the public can go back and see what was presented. How much of the information about the present, about the proposals is available online? Does, does all the public have access to the executive summaries?
The executive summaries and the one-page overall score sheets were included in the packets when they went out, so that there's access to that.
So the public can get that executive summary and they can watch the video, so if the public's interested in providing their council person or the council as a whole feedback on what they saw and what they think, they have everything out there and can pursue it and give it to us. Great, thank you.
Any other discussion on this matter?
Just a question, do we have labels on the buckets? Yes, no, partial funding?
Partial part, we have to figure out after we say yes to.
Okay.
That's, I think that's how it works.
Okay.
I have a maybe bucket.
So yes, maybe, partial, no?
That's my.
Mine is yes, yes, partial, maybe, and then no, because maybe is a place where I could see somebody around the table persuading me that I, it's something, but I'm not putting it in immediately, either full or partial.
So yes is full, yes, partial is yes, but partial.
Yep.
Maybe, eh, you, yeah.
We can talk about it.
And no is?
I don't think so, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we should probably off that same policy.
Right, yes, good point, yeah, that's what I've started so far also.
Thank you.
Good question, any other discussions or questions on this matter tonight? Oh, yes, Jaya?
I think just as a point of clarification, the sheets that we had kind of talked about sustainability, and I know I talked to a few folks about, like, we want to look at, like, what's the long-term impact, but I don't think we've really talked about how applicants who are directly addressing the impact of the pandemic, the ongoing impact, how that should be considered. I think that's worth discussing, to me, considering it's American Rescue Plan funding, if someone's application is specifically addressing either a need that's related to the pandemic or the impact of the pandemic still, that that's something that should be considered, because I, just again, looking at the, you know, the scoring, I don't think that's clear, so I just wanted to raise that to make sure we're all kind of looking at things in a similar way.
Thank you, any other last discussion questions? Okay, then we'll conclude this discussion item. Next is council input and communications. Yes, James?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention once again, my sincere condolences to Stacy, Sam, and Emma Bennett on the loss of their father. I was able to attend the memorial service today, and I want to thank everyone who came together to make a lasting memory of Scott and to bring together a good collection of his friends and colleagues to remember him in the best way possible, and it's a, it's a big loss for this community, not just losing him as a, as a father, as a, as a husband, as a family member, as a friend, but this community has lost a champion for, for us in Springfield who made a, who made a real difference, and we're going to feel that loss for some time.
Seeing, oh, Chandra, go ahead.
I want to thank the public for their input on the variety of topics that came up tonight. I think being an active participant in your city government is important, and we hear you and we're listening, sometimes, I mean, being on this, this side of city government and seeing quote-unquote "how the sausage is made" is very different from when I was not on this side of the government, and things are not as straightforward or simple as I'm sure many of us thought they would be after getting elected and wanting to enact change, but I just, I just wanted to say that, so, thank you.
Jaya?
Yeah, I think kind of piggyback off of that, I think, you know, we've heard a lot of really important feedback tonight, and, you know, I'm glad we're having more discussion about the FOP contract. I also want to thank the parties who were involved in their work to get what we do have. I think that's part of the discussion that we need to have with the community, is that was actually a much faster and it sounds like smoother process than often happens, but the, the public has a right to ask the questions that they've asked, and so I think that it's good that we're taking the time to be thoughtful about, about those questions, make sure that they are answered, and I think also just to make sure that folks know, one of, one of the pieces of this has been a big focus on thinking about public safety more broadly, and we, we will be moving forward with our public safety review, the firm that'll be working with us, it has, has agreed to that contract, and so we'll, we'll be excited to share more information about that soon.
Any other council input? Right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.